All right, good evening, everybody. Tonight is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Town of Darien Zoning Board of Appeals. It's Wednesday, April nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and around seven twenty, uh, seven thirty-four. All right, I'm gonna open and continue the following calendars. Calendar number four, two thousand twenty-three, the application of Wilder Gleason on behalf of David Massey and Meredith Timbers, um, uh, for the property known as Three Haskell Lane. All right, that's opened and now continued until May seventeenth. Also, I'm opening and continuing the application of number five, two thousand twenty-three, the application of Jackie Coleman, um, Kaufman, excuse me, uh, of Carmody, Torrance, Sandec, and Hendacy on behalf of Leslie Gold for property two hundred Long Neck Point Road. And I'm also opening and continuing that until May seventeenth. Okay? We should be good. So we're going on to the public hearing this evening, which is number six, two thousand twenty-three, the application of Kara Gaitley, uh, and Nettor Associates on behalf of Robert Y. Bell to allow the reconstruction of a two-and-one-half-story residence located at One Ridge Acres Road.
So first of all-
Good evening.
Good evening. I want to thank everybody for, you know, keeping the meeting open tonight. I know we're doing like application tonight, so I appreciate everybody's time. I know it would've been easier just to continue things. So this application is a little interesting, kind of different. One Ridge Acres, uh, suffered, there was a fire at the location in two thousand twenty-one. Um, the structure, the dwelling structure is still standing. It was ultimately determined that it was a total loss. Initially, at some point, there was the thinking that maybe it wasn't a total loss and that repairs, replacement, cleaning could be done to render the structure habitable again. It's, you know, currently uninhabitable at the time of the fire, uninhabitable. The thinking was, we can repair, replace, you know, and then move back in. As things progressed, experts come in, it was determined that the structure is a total loss. So at that point, plans changed, okay, we can no longer just repair, replace, we need to now demolish, rebuild, or move, um, which was the plan. And then, um, an engineer determined that the foundation was still sound. So that kind of now becomes a factor in terms of with this as-of-right rebuild, do we, do the applicants have to rebuild on the foundation that an engineer has determined is structurally sound, or do they rebuild somewhere else?
If the engineer had determined that the, uh, foundation were not structurally sound-
What did the, what do the owners want, what would they have done then?
If, if this, if the, if an engineer had determined that the foundation was not structurally sound, they would have, with their architect, done what the architect would advise, which is now you have to rebuild in, in a conforming location.
But would that be what they would've wanted to do, or do they come to us with an application the same as what you're presenting tonight?
It's hard in this situation. There's a lot of emotions going on, but I, obviously, they want, they don't want any of this to have happened, right? They don't want it not being their home. This was a home they loved. I think if the foundation was determined to not be structurally sound, they would've been like, okay, let's build wherever we have to build and do that. Because it, and they looked at buying somewhere else, lots of different options were considered. They ultimately determined that this location and this is, this is their home. And they want to be in their home and on the property that they raised their, you know, they've had other properties in Darien, but this is a very, this is where their kids were raised. And if, I don't know if you remember the fire, but it was days before graduation and proms, and so there is an emotional element here. And so the, the structure was determined to be a total loss. And then, but then the foundation was determined to be structurally sound.
No impact to the pool or the pool equipment or the gazebo in the back? So that's all?
That's all. They have no intention of touching any of that. They really want to rebuild their home. And they intend on rebuilding the home in the same, essentially square, they're not increasing volume, they are not increasing square footage, they are not increasing, you know, percentage of, because also it's a non-conforming lot, so.
But in cases where people are doing work for their house and they, for one reason or another, in part often because the first floor isn't structurally sound, it's determined that they need to bring it down to the foundation. In, in those cases, this board usually then says, even though the foundation might be structurally sound, even though the foundation might handle a two-story building, we do request that the home be moved to a conforming, or at least more conforming, location. And you're an attorney, not, so I can ask you, but I may not ask a, you know, lay applicant. Why is this case different than all the, the other cases that we, that we hear? And we make that determination, move it to a-
I, I think that's a fair question, and I think we're coming into this as we are viewing this as an as-of-right rebuild, but understanding that given the, the level of rebuild versus repair, that you may have that view. And if that's the view, I think the applicants, if they have to look at conforming locations within the property-
And have they done that? Has their architect found-
They have an architect who is looking at all options. Time is not on their side at this point, so we're unfortunately doing multiple, we're doing two avenues, right? The architect, we're kind of moving forward at two-
But have they found, so has the architect, as we sit here today, has he done at least some type of site plan that suggests that they can get at least as large a home, assuming that they want that, in a conforming location?
Full site, full site plan, like in the terms of like a site plan? No. Is, has the architect done work to look at, and I believe Woody, oh, while it is a non-conforming lot, there is buildable area that would allow for a conforming location for-
Without touching the pool?
Without touching the pool, yes.
Right.
There is.
Right, so we're, if, if we're required that, we want to impact the pool, which again just would add to the annoyance of this whole thing.
And I, I believe what has also been looked at is septic and leaching trench. And there is build, I believe there are, there is a way to conform, have a building be conforming or more conforming than, because currently-
There's no sewer on Brookside? Wow, I didn't know that.
Actually, it was looked into, the cost of hooking up to sewer, and it was over a million dollars. What? That's how far, I mean, it's, it, that, that north, as far, yeah, so that was not an option. So multiple things have been looked at. I mean, it's, it's, this has not been an easy project, this has not been an easy process. It's been difficult. But I think at this point, they understand, and we are here looking to this board, understanding the constraints that this board operates under. And the foundation was determined to be sound if we, if they can, but obviously, they can't build on the foundation without your approval. If they can't build on the foundation, you know, as of right, then they will-
Okay, I, I think the board gets it. This may be the first time I've ever seen a board and applicant actually maybe agree, because I think if I'm understanding the Q and A, if you will, between Mr. Green and yourself, um, you know, he's, he's saying to you that the board generally, when a house comes down, we like to see it moved into a more conforming area.
And I think he has lost a point there.
I think you've indicated that there is a more conforming area and that the homeowner's willing to move it there?
I think the homeowner is at this point, while initially it was difficult to understand, we didn't want our house to burn down, we did not, right? So once you get over that emotional, like, wait, how can, why can't we, you know, it's, it's a difficult concept for people to understand that, well, we'd like it to be more conforming despite, you know, it, once you get people to understand that-
Well, I understand it completely. I was just curious, so the homeowner is willing to do it, is that correct?
They understand, and, and I think Dan Conlin is a wonderful architect and is really good at working with people on-
Okay.
Here's, there's other things we can, it's a difficult lot. It's a non-conforming lot in a two-acre, it's, it's, it's not easy, but with the right professionals, I think you can look at all the regulations, and I think, I think as long as they can-
Understood completely. Yep, I get it.
Is there not a provision somewhere in the zoning code that says something to the extent of, in terms of Gary's question about the distinction here, if a property is non-conforming and is destroyed by fire, flood, or some other similar cause, that the zoning board of appeals can allow the reconstruction so long as it is no, no more, less conforming than it was? Isn't there some provision like that?
There is, other cities have had provisions similar, but once you reach, I think they're more in the hurricane or flood situation where, but even in those situations, when you reach damage of the type where repair, replacement reaches over fifty percent value, then you have to become in compliance. So while this is-
That's our, that's our reg. It's the fifty percent value.
I thought there was a separate provision in relation to the zoning board of appeals that allows it without hardship to grant the permission to rebuild.
But I think that's the fifty percent, my recollection is that's the fifty percent provision.
I am not-
I'm not gonna, I'm not-
I don't believe the Darien regulations have a provision to that effect.
Okay.
And I have-
If you wanna, if you want us to, if you wanna research that before we decide, yeah.
But case law in Connecticut, mostly in this area, the, the cases closest on point are the FEMA hurricane cases and, which are, I think are similar, kind of non-homeowner-caused damage. They are forces of nature, tragic accidents, right? So I think they're kind of on par factually, while not, you know, not exactly on par. And even in the hurricane situations where, in those cases, the homeowners had absolutely nothing to do with any of that damage, if the damage is over fifty percent. And so I don't believe the Darien regulations have anything that overrides state and federal case law on that.
Well, it certainly can't override, on the case law, but I just thought there was a provision in the zoning text.
Okay.
I mean-
You're good.
I think there's, I mean, there have been variances on this property previously, recognizing the hardship of that, the property, and the setbacks did come into effect after the construction of the original structure. The frontage was originally Brookside, not Ridge Acres, so Ridge Acres, frontage is excessive given the original structure of the home. It was more aligned with a side setback, um, but it's where we are now.
Understood, thank you.
And would, if there were a new design, would the front be Ridge Acres?
I don't think the front can be Ridge Acres at this point, but I think that would be something more, I think, between the assessor, like, I don't know who determines what frontage is. Ridge Acres is what they consider their address.
Right.
I think they want their frontage to be Ridge Acres. They're not asking to change their frontage to, to Brookside. They, they're part of the Ridge Acres Association, they, that is what they consider their home. So I think they want to consider Ridge Acres their frontage. So they're not asking for that at this point.
Okay. Matt?
Uh, nothing for me. Just one clarification there, that you're saying that they are gonna rebuild the house almost exactly how it was before?
So they are going to rebuild size, square footage, um, without getting too in-depth to the insurance process. They really cannot increase volume or change things that much more unless they go beyond the scope and go out of pocket in terms of what the insurance company is covering. So they will mostly, they're, they plan on staying within the number of bedrooms, the number of bathrooms, the size of the kitchen, the square footage. They're pretty much staying in like, I don't think it'll, I don't know if it will look the same at the end of the project, but I'm not the architect. They do not plan on increasing square footage, volume, bedrooms, bathrooms, chimneys, like that kind of stuff. They do not plan on increasing that.
But if they had a chance to rebuild, they might design it so that you get to the fourth bedroom on the same floor, and there might be some improvements that they would do. Maybe they could do it anyway.
I, yeah, I think that's really more for the architect.
Yeah, 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 sure.
I'm a sad lawyer brain, I can read books and read words, and I'm not really good at visioning stuff.
Okay.
Dan Conlin's a lot better at that than I am.
The only thing I'll say is that I recognize the hardship, and that's sad, but it's not a technical hardship from our standpoint.
Is that a legal, it's, yes.
It's not a legal hardship, but I'll say that every time we have, I don't use the force, heavily encourage someone to come into compliance, require that a applicant come into compliance, they usually come out with a much better product. So I really appreciate your willingness to be creative and look at this from our perspective. So.
I think they're really just trying to respect the various processes they have to go through and having the foundation be deemed-
And, yep.
So they have to go through this process. I think they understand-
Thank you.
-the threshold and how high it is. And they understand that there has to be other plans, and they, right, demolition permit has been sought, it has been granted, the fencing is up, they are ready to move forward. If they can't move forward on one plan, they understand they have to move forward with another plan. But they have to go through the process, and unfortunately, sometimes when things happen, you have to go through the process as required, and that's what they're doing.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Any other questions? Happy to answer them.
Any other questions from anybody?
I really, we really appreciate the time, I know we're the only people.
No worries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. All right, Woody, anything from you?
Oh, thank you.
Okay, well, unless I'm missing something, I think, I think we're okay here, because we're, we're always inclined to ask them to move it into a conforming area. When something like this occurs, the homeowner seems to be willing to move it into a more conforming area.
Do you wanna, do you wanna close the hearing and get into deliberation or something? Anyone else wanna speak and all that?
Yeah, no, yeah, I'm sorry. I was just moving along, I'm sorry. So let me stop there, I apologize. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to be heard on this matter?
I don't want.
Okay, okay. So I am now going to close this application and we'll move to deliberation, okay? I'm not going to repeat myself, so I, I stand by what I said a minute, a moment ago. Anybody would like to add any comment, questions, concerns? I think that's a no, so silence is golden. So I think then the, the move here is then to, to deny the application, um, and let them go ahead and do their thing and move it into the-
Yeah, because I think you're right, I think it's consistent, absent Kevin's thinking, and I don't know that that regulation exists, and they are represented by counsel.
Yeah, I agree.
Right? Which, again, and, and certainly counsel's partner knows the zoning regulations well. Absent that, I think we generally, if someone's taking down something to foundation, and in situation, I mean, this one's an unfortunate situation, and it's not by choice, absolutely, but we do ask them to bring it into a more conforming state. I, I think if they came back with the site plan but needed some variance because of some aspect of the land, once they get into that, uh, exercise, and they find that there's some, uh, structures, you know, some rock structures, something that they can't get through, we would entertain a discussion of a variance, but I think it, what's presented to us today, I think, consists of our prior rulings. We'd have to ask them to bring it into conformity, and there seems to be building area to allow them to do it without impacting the, the pool. So, I, I agree with you, Jeff, that that's where we should, we should come down.
Okay. Um, other comments?
I agree with Gary.
Okay. Do I have a motion to?
I'll move to deny this application for the reasons that we've discussed.
Understood. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor? Five zero deny. Okay, uh, thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Okay. So with that, uh, we'll, I guess we'll move on, not I guess, we'll move on to other business. All right? You okay, Woody?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good. All right, in other business this evening, we have a request for a six-month extension for Janet Rosino at eighty West Avenue. And her reason to, it, it require an extension is what, Woody?
Uh, well, I know they're just about to start, actually, construction, but-
Okay.
Need a little more time, almost everyone has said the same thing, that complications with contractors and COVIDs and pricing.
And this is her first extension request?
Yes.
But it would expire March twenty-ninth, so we're past the point of extension?
Yeah, we received the application for the request-
Okay.
-back in early March.
I think we're okay with this.
I'll move to approve the request for six months.
Second?
I'll second that, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, six months, Woody. Preliminary report from ZBA Committee considering requested release-
I'm sorry, was there another extension, Woody, that you had mentioned or not?
Well, there's a couple that came in yesterday-
I'm sorry.
-that are way down the end of the agenda, um, which would be adding to the agenda, if you want to jump to the other extensions.
Uh, okay.
Someone would have to make a motion to add these to it.
I'll add the request, I move to add to the agenda two requests, Woody, is that right? That we received recently for extensions of the variances.
Okay.
I second your motion.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's start with the request of fifty-nine Maple Street for a six-month extension. Uh, I guess they're gonna be traveling for a few months, so-
I think they're traveling for a few months.
I know. That's a heck of a reason, I tell you. So Woody, is this fifty-nine Maple Street's first, because I like Gary's question, is it their first request?
It is, and, uh, this is a total replacement that, uh, it's been a struggle for them to finalize engineering plans and everything else, so.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go with that excuse as opposed to this one.
I'll move to approve.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, six months for fifty-seven Maple, okay, Woody? And then there's one other, which is the Jones residence at two Contentment Island. Woody, the reason for this request is what?
Well, I'd like to add, Al, who sends in this one, I think you should come and ask for it in person.
I don't-
Come on, Al.
Al?
You don't know this, Al is a member of the zoning board for about twenty years.
Oh, here it is.
And the one sentence request is, you know-
He doesn't even give a reason.
That's a power mover.
It is a power mover.
We don't know why you need to extend it?
Do we know why they want an extension?
Yeah, actually, actually, they just got P and Z commission approval because there's site work in the flood zone, so they barely are out of that. They have finally submitted final drawings for the permit, but they're not completing.
Okay.
And their, and their first approval expires May third, so.
Okay, I'll move to a few things.
Okay, do I have a second? Good, everybody, all in favor? Thank you, okay. I think that does it with the extensions, correct?
Correct.
Okay, good. So then I'm gonna go back, all right? Gonna go back to the original other business.
Giovanni.
Giovanni's, um, Gary, do you want to, um-
Yeah, so we've had, uh, since our last meeting, we had another meeting with council who reported on discussions with Giovanni's council, and, uh, you know, reported, um, that they are continuing to work and actually re-engaging with the state to see if it's permissible for them to add some plantings on the island that's in front of the Giovanni's restaurant.
They need approval to add?
Because it's the state, it's state land, so they would have state approval not only to plant, but also they have to enter into a landscape maintenance agreement with the state, because we would want them to maintain what they plant. Police chief, I believe, uh, so not just a member of the force, but the police chief, thought that planting would be okay on the island, but because of sightlines, especially when exiting Giovanni's and trying to see, uh, traffic coming from Stamford moving eastbound, that planting should be no taller than three feet. So we're not talking about anything big, we're not talking about anything fencing, but something that we're trying to get the Giovanni's to agree to put something that looks a little bit better than the scrub that's there right now. We're also, we've also requested that they plant a couple of ornamental trees on both the, uh, mostly on the west side, but also perhaps on the east side of the property, just to enhance the landscaping of the property. I think we're moving towards a good resolution, but we're, and I believe that the Giovanni's have actually engaged a landscape architect, the ones they've worked with in the past, and are now at least engaging the town, the state, which maybe they didn't in the past, to try to get resolution. So I don't think we're at settlement yet, I don't think we're releasing their bond yet, but I think we're moving in the right direction, and, um, we'll give you another report next.
Yeah, my view is, I, I don't know or particularly care that much about what the resolution is, but they can't just ignore our final determination, so there's gotta be something they do and some penance they pay.
That's right, but we agree, but a lot of the work was taken over by the state-
Yeah, I understand.
-and the state frustrated, um, perhaps for legitimate purposes, the plan that we put in place, especially this, kind of the size of that island and what could be done on it.
Which is a justification rationale for why they could do something significantly scaled back, which would be something-
Correct, but not zero.
Right.
So that is our goal, and I think Patty is doing a, a really good job representing the town's interests and trying to move it forward.
Great, okay. Thank you very much for your help on all this. We really appreciate it. Okay, great.
Let me mention that Jana has been helpful to sitting in with us, uh-
Great.
-on a few occasions, and reading piles of things that she had to get up to speed on stuff that the rest of us have dealt with for a lot of years. So through her credit, she was-
I understand that comment. Okay, moving along, uh, look, I'm seeing an approval minutes from March fifteenth, is that correct? I didn't, I didn't, yeah, I didn't think so, okay. So I haven't had a chance to read the, the outside context with members, um-
I did, I have one question about it.
Oh, sure. Oh, please, of course.
Who drafted this, Woody?
Um, I did, probably, but it's been so long.
So I, I appreciate it, but the one thing I would say is perhaps town council or someone should look at it, it feels slightly unconstitutional to me-
Good.
-to say people can't talk to us and exercise their First Amendment rights. So while I appreciate the spirit of it, I think we should, if we're gonna have something like this that we publish, we should probably have town council look at it and think about that.
Yeah, we wouldn't necessarily have to publish it, but as guidance for the members, yes, it would be essentially adopted policy or bylaw. We have had periodic questions over the years that I've heard, and I think some members have been quite uncomfortable on occasion when approached and not sure how to answer to, hey, come to the hearing and express yourself, I can't really review stuff on site, anyway, all that.
If a member is uncomfortable talking about it, then the member should just not talk about it. But, but that's neither here nor there, we'll-
And I think that's the way this board has operated for decades.
Yes, it has, since we've both been here for decades.
I, I don't know that it's even necessary.
Yeah, I, I personally do not.
Whether it's legally appropriate or not, I don't, we've had this discussion, I, I, you know, maybe it's useful in some instances for a board member to be able to say to an applicant or a neighbor of an applicant, I'm sorry, there's a policy that won't, that prevents me, but-
They're welcome to say that.
Or the board member can say what, what Jeff said, and say, I'm not comfortable talking about it.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's pretty simple, but I, I get it. So, okay, appreciate your work on that, Woody. We'll discuss that at a later time as it comes more and more informed.
Okay.
But I think Kevin's right, I think town council really should opine, not a lawyer, but I understand what he's saying, obviously, and I think, and I believe he may have a point, so, um- point. So with that in mind, I think before we adopt something like this, that we ought to have some input that, you know, we're not legally strangling somebody's First Amendment rights. I certainly don't want to get involved in that. All right. I don't, I, we don't need to get into, link at number five. Barb, do you want to, want to address number six with the regarding historic preservation considerations?
I'm still waiting for planning and zoning and architectural review board to make a proposal to us. It's out of my hands. So still no update.
Okay.
The machinations of this are slow.
Yes, they are. Not complaining.
Okay.
All right.
Is there anything that you would want to draft in terms of expression to these other boards?
I'm not sure how to move it forward. I've, I've been told, I mean, I guess Jeremy would have to give me some guidance on what to do with this. Let's talk about this afterwards. Maybe I can push him towards something. They were researching what other towns have done in terms of the adoption of historic variance precedent and variance. So it's kind of something to build on.
I think you drafting something would be pretty simple, whether it will conform to state law or not, is a question, because I think you would just add to the justifications for a variance, or where the board determines there is a significant historical benefit to the preservation of that property, then we would have the ability to grant variance, theoretically. Now, whether we want that full discretion ourselves, or there's some historical board that designates it in some way, it would be another question to consider. But I think the drafting is easy once you answer those couple of questions.
But if the, I mean, this is an academic discussion, but if the power to grant variance is a state law, would a neighbor who objects to a variance granted on those grounds?
Yeah, we could, 100%.
Have legal standing to say.
That's why I prefaced it with, depending on what state law allows. But if other towns are doing something like this, then there's gotta be some provision in state law that allows for it in instances of historical preservation of some kind.
How can I move this forward?
I don't know. Town council thing, get them to look into what, whether there's anything in state law that would allow for a variance in the instances of historic preservation.
And are there models?
There are models. Okay.
Model, model regulations in other towns.
Okay.
In Connecticut.
And if there is, it's gotta be based on some state law, I would think, or not.
It's worse than.
That helps. Okay.
Okay. Good. And I think that's gonna be it for, for right now. I'm not too sure why the covered porch allowance is in there, because we already have that. I think it's five by nine or five by eight, but in any event, not too sure. And then, so I think that's it. Is there anybody else that has any questions, comments, concerns, Darren?
Nope.
Then I think we're good. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn this meeting. A second.
All in favor?
I'm in favor.
Done. Have a nice evening, everybody.
Thanks, Gary.
Thanks a lot for coming, you guys.
Thank you.